Is your mic on?
Yes.
Jason.
Something changes.
It's on the table, that doesn't mean it's on.
My microphone's on.
That's what I was just checking. The time is now 6:37. With that, we will be calling this meeting to order. Thank you for your patience, everybody, in waiting while we got our board workshop out of the way. At this time, everybody that is able to do so, please rise for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to public comments. Does anybody have any public comments at this time?
Hi, I'm Betty Jo Reggie. I work at the school, but I'm here as a parent tonight. And I just wanted to bring up, there's been a lot of talk about moving the cross-country course out to the new property. And I just want to give some input. As a parent of alumni cross-country runner, my son Kyle ran for many years and ran for Coach Scarborough and was there to pray around Coach Scarborough's house when he passed away from cancer and was there for the dedication with the memorial out at the course and everything. And it just really saddens our family to think that the course is getting moved. So I would just really like to put some more thought into that before that would be put into an action item, that there's a lot of kids that were really influenced by Coach Scarborough. I know Mason ran. There's just a lot of neat stories that came out of that influence as him as a mentor. And I just think it's a great course, that he always wanted that to be right next to our school, so that the kids could walk over there, so that they could run. And it's just, I think, important to really take a lot of thought into before we were to move that course. Thank you.
Any other public comment at this time? Okay. And my apologies, board, I bypassed our approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion and support to move forward with our agenda, or are there any concerns with it?
So move.
Okay. So I have support by Richard and Rachel. That's going to bring us to Agenda.
Call for discussion.
Do I have any discussion over the agenda? Okay. Then, Richard?
Yes.
Danette?
Aye.
Jason?
Yes.
Rick?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And I am an aye. That brings us to Agenda Item 3, moving into our reports with Mr. Aiken.
Yeah, I'm just thinking the girls are running down the hallway right now, laughing and cheering. I think our JV girls just won their first basketball game.
Yay!
Wow. You guys have my report in there. I'm not going to go into it, we're running behind, so moving on.
Thank you, Mr. Aiken. That brings us to Kim.
Dave, this is your second play, Richard, that I was giving to you.
Thank you for that, Kim. Any questions for Kim on that? Okay.
I actually do. Kim, are we still waiting for some of the state aid and such to come in? Okay. So there's still stuff we don't know at this point?
Thank you, Kim. Brings us to Ms. Pressler.
I have a lot in there. I think focusing on my quote of "you don't have to be bad to get better." We had three people go to the MTSS conference in Lansing. That was confirming and validating that we're doing some great things and we have some improvements to make. So, kind of refining the great things that we're already doing. And those are in there.
Thank you, Jamie. Any questions for Jamie?
Appreciate your reports.
Yes, they're always very detailed.
Appreciate all the work.
They're the best team ever.
You do. You very much so do. That brings us to 3B, Ms. Dawson.
I also shared in my order report a lot of people about the Fulbright, the Fullbright, the Wild These things go. I wanted to come and show you the agenda, what it takes, it's a lot of learning and other things. We're planning, we're trying to see where the United States is going. And it's just like a rigorous process. I'm now in meetings like we do, doing meetings right now, getting ready for it. Airport, so we get ready to go to the experience. And so, I've talked with other folks who have done it. That's like the most influential thing that they've ever done as an educator. And so, I just wanted to give you guys a little bit of advice, what, because of the flights that I am bringing, and working on others.
It's going to be packed.
No. Yes, they asked her, she's nice, but like the flight, she's on her feet, she's cold. There's like four hours of daylight while we're there. But there's a lot of, and the thing that's in there is like this huge educational fair that happens. So, pretty amazing things that I, you probably, like Finland is one of the most effective schools in the world. And so, that's the purpose of why they're teaching children. So we shared ahead of time what things that we're hoping to learn more about. And some of my things are that rigorous parent engagement, and just that idea of how to get your core into what they're doing. So like they do that at their, so I'm excited to learn, and the others that are on the
Did you say you're one of 20? Wow, that is really cool.
Yeah. Literally, I got the email when I was in my office, and I was like, are you kidding me?
That's amazing.
I'll kind of put this in perspective. I've been doing this a long time, 35 years, and I know three people that have applied for the Fulbright. And she's the only one that's ever gotten it, so.
Congratulations.
They don't hand these out on the corner. It's a pretty prestigious honor and we're really proud of her.
Absolutely.
That's awesome.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Right.
Board spotlight when you come back.
Yeah, I'll be happy.
Yeah.
Take lots of pictures.
I will. I think I'd do like a blog.
Oh, okay, good. That'll be nice.
On the first night, allegedly, they have more saunas than vehicles in Pittsburgh. It's the happiest place on earth, the happiest country on earth, they say. And so, I hear that we're supposed to go in first light and sit on it, and then just go.
Nice.
You should be holding. That's really cool.
Do it for Grant.
Why didn't Finland do it?
Just do it for Grant.
Yeah, right?
Thank you, Ms. Dawson.
Where does Finland rate on the global scale of education? Aren't they pretty?
If they're not first, they're within the top.
I've watched some things in the finals room.
Yeah, there's some great, I've read a couple of places along the way. And I think like, I'll be able to come up with that. In America, we have some more people about how we educate all kinds of people that we like. It's been an ongoing partnership, starting on board years, we teach Finland and other countries, and education, and learning with each other. And it's not surprised that part of education, and case for that, so it's really a purposeful collaboration to help people in the United States learn some of the stuff that we're doing.
Right. No, that's amazing. I hope you have a blast. Any other questions or comments for Ms. Dawson? Okay. That brings us to Mr. Jones.
Tomorrow for concert, and for every day of concert, and then we go starting at 6:00 in the middle of the night, so together, so that we can do that, like a nice job.
Thank you.
Our, yes, us working on our class, second semester, we're looking at un-studied up right now, trying to get the kids right to level, to do some instructional, like academics to get them to, to get them to. So that's kind of a little small change, but it's still up until June, but.
So real soon.
Yeah, real soon. And then, this time of year, the staff and I, we had to talk a lot, so the second time of year, the Christmas coming up, it also geared part of our students. So we just have to be there in there, open that, which I have a speaking coming up at 6:00. Just, obviously, that's a big event, that's on, breaking this together, and we just have to keep our eyes and ears open, that helps us, and that's just.
For sure.
You heard that? We welcome the thank you, and our Christmas recitals, and we're glad we got this all people to come down there. So, just glad you guys wanted to come. Appreciate it.
Yes, thank you for that, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Jones? Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Jones. And Mr. D.
So, a big thing from high school for the quarter is the work of the working on our kind of the absentee policy. What we have is we finished up school last week. This will, tomorrow will be our fifth time that we've not talked, focused, we've done a lot of digging, a lot of research, trying to get something that is good for all of our students at the high school. In that time, just in that time, the red, yellow, green, then you see there, we bent that, make that look a little bit different, and to have, I don't know if we have a good year, we definitely didn't really finish, but it's across the nation. It's not, it's not a strong problem. It's a problem. For late day, we had that last week, and it was just a weird situation, and we released that sort of stuff, and students are going to pay for that. Our, that's going to go for choice for that, and then our Tiger Denver store and the Snapchat are going to be doing that as well, so we're going to have a $1,000 for spending on that.
Aw.
Yeah. Yeah, that's whatever, no questions.
No questions for Mr. V?
Nope.
All right. That brings us to Mr. McKnight.
Hello, everyone. I want to start with NHS again. Monday of the 24th, we added 16 new members to NHS, and 14 of them being juniors, so they should be around for next year, too. But two seniors, new seniors, which is always good to have, those seniors that didn't make it last year, being like, I want to go into NHS now. And then, that same night was also honors night, so it was a pretty good night for that day, for NHS and just people who did pretty good academically. For athletics and clubs, our basketball team just started up. Writing this report up, they just won against Cedar Springs, and now Friday, they won a close game against Cedar Springs, but it was not so close when we won against Try County. And that's great bragging rights over Try County. I go to school with a lot of Try County kids up in tech, so it's great to brag to them that we won. Wrestling season is starting up, so I'm sure we're going to see more things on that of wrestling. And I'm excited to see what happens with that. We have some pretty good wrestlers that represent our school. Events that happened in this last month, all-conference pictures, we're on the 17th for those all-conference athletes. That was a good day. We went to The Rock afterwards at Ferris, so couldn't complain there. I also want to talk about the birthday wall at high school. I think that was a very cool addition, and it was a big surprise, because I didn't know, like this wasn't announced, or else I didn't find out about it until I saw it. And I was like, that's kind of cool that we're including all of our students into birthdays, so that every student feels that they're special in their certain way. So, it's always, it's always a good, you know, in case you forget your friend's birthday, you can always look at that, so you don't have to ask.
Then you never forgot.
Exactly. And then, at the middle school, middle school basketball season started as well. I got to watch a little bit of a game before honors night. They're doing pretty well, so I wouldn't worry about high school basketball in the future, or looking like we've got some young stars. Primary center and the elementary, there is a concert on Wednesday, the 10th, so if you want to support, you want to come out and support, please do so. There you go.
Thank you for that.
Finished the turkey trot before Thanksgiving break. This was always one of my favorite events. Everyone got a ribbon for participation. And also, currently raising money for a blood drive for the students that need a little bit of extra help during these winter months. You know, it's going to be one of the coolest winters we've had, and most noteworthy winters we had, so it's always good to try and have that sense of community and build up those relationships. Yeah, that's about all I have.
Thank you, Evan. Anything for Evan?
No.
Thank you, Evan.
That brings us to Agenda Item 4, the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion and support?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Ken.
Support.
Any discussion, questions, comments?
Yep. Absolutely.
And my wife is doing a celebration on this Friday, 11 to 4, we have to give her. She's been here 28 years, and she's found an acre in our district, and her affirmation is like words, and I also, so just encourage all of you to join. We have a special guest.
So 11 to 4, special time though is 2:30. Okay. And that's this Friday. Okay. That is very nice of you to do that. That's amazing, Ms. Dawson. Thank you for that. I just want to say thank you to any donations that we received.
Nope.
And our sponsors, they are always more than willing to step up, and I just like them to know that they're greatly appreciated for that. Anything else from the board? Okay. Then I will go ahead and take a roll call vote on that. Danette?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Rich?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
And I am an aye. That brings us to Agenda Item Number 5, any unfinished business.
I don't have, I don't have any.
Nothing at this time. Brings us on to Agenda Item Number 6, our action items, moving into A1, recommendation to approve the general fund summary.
Yeah, the Board of Education is being asked to approve the general fund summary as submitted.
May I get a motion and support to approve the general fund summary?
Some.
Support.
Thank you, Rachel, and Jason. Any questions or comments in regards to it? Okay. Hearing none, I will move forward with roll call vote. Jason?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Rachel's talking to me.
Rick?
Aye.
Danette?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And I am an aye. That brings us to 6A2, approval and adoption of the second reading of the Behavior Threat Assessment and Management Team's policy.
I'll make the motion while waiving the reading.
Thank you, Ken.
Support.
So I have a motion to accept and waive the reading by Ken and support by Danette.
Okay. This memo was written to request the board to approve the second reading and adopt the Behavioral Threat Assessment and Management Team's policy.
Any discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll go on with vote. Rich?
Yes.
Rachel?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jason?
Yes.
Ken?
Aye.
Danette?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Brings us to 6A3, approval and adoption of the second reading of the Universal FASFA Challenge Policy.
I'll make the motion to approve and waive the reading.
Thank you, Ken. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you, Rachel.
Okay. This memo was written to request the board to approve the second reading and adopt the Universal FASFA Challenge Policy.
Any discussions on the adoption? Okay. Moving forward with the roll call vote. Jason?
Yes.
Danette?
Aye.
Rich?
Oh, I think it's Rick. Yeah. Yes.
Rachel?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Brings us to 6A4, recommendation to approve resolution to allow the administration to market the sale of three vacant lots.
Yeah, the board is being asked to approve the attached resolution for the authorization to allow the administration to explore, market, analyze, and analyze the sale of three vacant residential lots. As noted in the resolution, the recommendation to accept and offer purchase agreement will be brought back before the Board of Education for approval. I'm requesting that the board approve the resolution for the authorization to allow the administration to explore the market in analyzing the sale of the three vacant lots.
Thank you, Kevin. May I get a motion and support?
So move.
Thank you, Rich and Rachel. And any discussion? I do just want to remind everybody that this were the three vacant lots that we had already seen the layout of and had prior discussion to. And the copy is in there as well. Any further discussion on that?
I probably missed it, but why is there four parcels on there?
One's the baseball field.
Yeah, one's the field, and then three would be...
We're not getting rid of that one.
Yeah.
No. All right. Then I'll prove.
Yeah, that's on the corner.
What is the timeline, Kevin, that you would put these up?
We're going to try to get them out next week. That was part, that's kind of the timeline with the resolution. We'll get on the website, we're going to have to advertise it. Like Marshall was talking about in the prior meeting, we're working with Dana Abrams.
Yep.
And she recommended a 10-day window, because there's also got to be a 30-day attachment where we, they can come in and look at the properties and go through all the do-ther-do dealings.
So 10 days for someone to show interest?
Yep.
And then 30 days for them to confirm their interest, essentially?
Correct, yes.
Any further question?
No, I would just like the Ad-Hoc Committee, you know, as they consider these types of questions as well, I just want to thank them for their time and putting their thoughts into it and giving us their recommendation as well.
And hope they'll be there for many more.
Right. They still have work for them.
We need to.
Yes, we do.
Any further comment or discussion? Okay. I will take a roll call vote on that. Rachel?
Aye.
Rich?
Yes.
Danette?
Aye.
Jason?
Yes.
Ken?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Brings us to 6A5, recommendation to plan and execute the proposed consolidation of GPS schools from four to three educational buildings and realign grades as proposed by the first day of the 26-27 school year.
Okay, the recommendation is superintendent, I'm recommending that the board approve the recommendation to plan and execute the proposed consolidation of GPS schools from four to three educational buildings and realign grades as proposed by the first day of the 2026-27 school year.
Thank you, Kevin. May I get a motion and support?
Some.
A second.
Thank you, Rachel and Richard. Any discussion at this time?
Are the questions and answers by the community, is that on the website?
It's right in your packet.
Okay.
But they are on the website.
Yeah, they were linked to the website also.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, as we're talking about consolidating schools and such, you know, I had a, ran into a parent this last weekend, and they were expressing concern that, hey, if we go, if we go down this road, I'm pulling my kids out of the car. And I encouraged that parent to reach out to you, Mr. Aiken, and talk through their concerns. They did talk through them with me, and I did try to encourage them that the information that they were acting on was not accurate to the proposed plan. But, you know, do what is right for you and your family and your students. So, I guess, I just want to encourage anybody, you know, if, as a parent, if you have concerns about the potential consolidation, if this passes, please reach out to Mr. Aiken and get the details, understand how it would actually impact your students. And I would encourage, you know, those that have been involved, continue to have those conversations with people. You know, I think that this is the right course of action for our district, and, you know, as a result of, you know, of this and being part of the Ad-Hoc Committee and the questions, and actually also seeing some of the opportunities that this is going to afford the district, you know? I mean, I'll share that I am in full support of it.
I do, I had to take a step back and look at it myself, as what is best for our students. And I do feel with Jamie coming in with the MTSS program and the alignment that our staff and our principals are all going into, this gives a lot more educational instruction one-on-one with our students and more...
one-on-one with our students and more collaboration between three versus four and splitting it up for an almost vacant building. So there's, there's really, there's no sense to it and what we've been doing for the last 20-some years hasn't been working and it's probably not going to if we keep considering the same course of action we've been taking for all those years. So this scary change is, sometimes it's the only way to get better.
Yes.
Sure.
And I've seen that. I, I have a lot of them through Andrea's and they seem like they're a lot more accepting to the idea of it and it's more of a build-your-own type of process for them that I think that they're looking at as, I'm going to make this mine because it is. It's not ours, it's theirs. And, and it's nice to get the reminders from them that it isn't. And I do think this will bring them closer and there'll be more unity and more school spirit and it's what we needed, a little too far apart.
I think it's important that people understand that it is better for the kids.
It is.
You know, with the systems that they have, with what Jamie's put in place, with how it's worked with the principals, how they all work together, how it is going to benefit the kids, and, and I think that's probably what we need to focus on most. You know, I, it, it's a tough decision and I think people need to understand that we have put a lot of time into thinking of ways, you know, it started out more as a way, we need to save the school money, you know?
Definitely.
And, you know, maybe, maybe it won't happen the first year, maybe it will. You know, it's something that we are still trying to investigate, but the overall picture, I think we need to focus that we're trying to make it better for our students. And if our students aren't succeeding, then we're not doing what we're supposed to do as a board and as administrators and, and as teachers, you know? When it boils down to everybody, I think it gives a better, gives a better opportunity for everyone to succeed and I think that's what we're really focusing on and...
Well, that's what we're here for.
Yep.
Hey, Kevin?
Yeah.
Not nickpicking, but I know a year ago, I know Ken and I figured out the, how many kids, how many less kids we have. I, I thought it was since like 2001, instead of 2011, we dropped 2,000.
Since 2007, you've dropped about 1,000 kids, roughly.
2007?
Seven, yeah.
Seven, because it says 11 in here. Someone might nitpick, like, you know, me.
The graph on the back of the one communication, I think you saw it while...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, the one I had was 2000, from 2007 until present day.
Okay. Yeah, I, I know I, I went through and I graphed it out and I had almost 20 years of decline.
Yeah. Yeah.
If, if I recall, if I recall, when I, when I did, when I did that, I think there was only one, maybe two, and years, there was an increase, all the other years, there was a decrease.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's a steady static, anywhere from 2.5 to 4%. I mean, that's just, when you, when you put it on the graph like that, it was very telling. You know, we can sit here and we can talk numbers and we can throw that out there, but when you get that visual, it's, yeah, it's real.
And it's a statewide problem.
Yeah, it's not just a...
The numbers speak.
We're, we're dealing with it in the entire county.
Yep, good job. You know, on the consolidation, I just think it's, we're trying to be ahead of the curve. You know, and that's the whole purpose behind it.
Any further discussion or comments? Okay, we'll move forward with a roll call vote. Rachel?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
I will now. Donette?
Aye.
Jason?
Yay.
Rick?
Aye.
Rich?
Yay.
And I am an aye. That brings us to... Yes, the motion was made by Rachel and the support was Rich. You're very welcome. Moving on to 6A6.
Yeah, the Board of Education is being asked to approve an updated letter of agreement as provided between the Grant Public Schools and the Grant Education Association to address the seniority for non-certified teaching staff. Last month, we brought one in and we all signed it, but there was one piece, number five, or no, number four, was not included after the union went back and talked to the Uniserve Director, he recommended we add, they added number four to it. I have agreed to that. I think that's very solid and I think it really solidifies this LOA for us both. So it is at this time, I'm recommending the approval of the following letter of agreement.
Thank you, Kev. May I have a motion and support?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I heard Ken and support by Rick.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion at this time?
I, I just want to make a comment about just the, just the level of coordination and teamwork that I am seeing, and, and I see a little bit more of it than the rest of the Board, just being in the, in the office of the President. But the, the level of coordination and teamwork between Mr. Aiken and our union representatives, I think that, I was, I was just making the comment the other day that, you know, several years ago, I was at a board meeting and it very much seemed to be an us-against-them type situation where the administration and the, and the union leadership were, were just at each other's throats and didn't trust each other at all. And I don't see that now. I, I see that they are, they are working as a team and I just, I guess, I just want the, the entire Board to, to know that and to hear that because, you know, we, in the past, we dealt, we dealt with a lot of these that were just done in secrecy and, you know, they were not, they were not brought to the Board. And, and, you know, bringing something like this to the Board and then going back and, and listening to the union representatives and going, hey, wait a minute, we probably need to add something, and then bringing that back, I, I think that shows just a, a level of trust that I don't believe has been here in the past. So thank you for, for bringing it back to us, Kevin, with, with that, with that change.
You're welcome.
Thank you to the union too.
Yeah, they, they do the hard work.
Yeah.
Absolutely. They're awesome.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All right, moving on with a roll call vote. Jason?
Yay.
Rich?
Yay.
Rick?
Yeah. Aye.
Donette?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
I am an aye. Moving forward to 6A7.
Yeah, the Board of Education is being asked to approve a letter of agreement as provided between Grant Public Schools and Grant Education Association regarding PTO donations for Carlton's Lot. If you don't know, Carlton and his wife just had a young one and it came a little early. There's some medical issues and being that he's a first-year, well, first full-year teacher, he didn't have the PTO days. So we got together with the union and, you know, brainstormed and we, we're allowing our staff to donate up to three days. That's the contract, contract language that we can donate up to three days for the young guy, young couple. And this is just a LOA to make that happen.
May I get a motion and support, please?
Some move.
I have Rachel and Jason.
Yep.
So Rachel for the motion and support by Jason. And discussion at this time?
I just want to say how awesome it is to see our own, the staff to rally around Carlton and his family like that.
Yep.
Such a uncertain and kind of scary time, you know, especially with him being so young, you know, young parents now.
Right. Well...
And according to the emails that happened quick, like she had to cut them off.
Yeah.
Well, there's a few of us sitting up here, it makes us feel really old. When we hired him back, it made me feel old.
But you're taking care of your own, right?
This makes me feel a lot older, so, no.
I'm really proud of...
Yeah, we, we got a great community here, great school community.
Absolutely do.
Any further discussion? All right, moving on with roll call vote. Donette?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Rich?
Yay.
Ken?
Aye.
Jason?
Yay.
Rachel?
Aye.
And I am an aye. That brings us to Agenda Item Number Seven, Board Workshop Superintendent Evaluation.
All right, so we have, we have a recommendation in the board pack to approve, but we have to go through the evaluation first, so I'm going to take over the meeting for this portion of it. So the Board, everybody received the Superintendent, Superintendent Evaluation Tool. What we'll do, I'll get my computer started up here, we'll go through the evaluation tool line by line. I will fill out an electronic version of it, that will do the scoring. I am also going to ask, and I have asked our building administrators to give us some feedback as well for part of the, the evaluation, and I've asked Mrs. Anderson to give us some feedback as well on the finance portion, so let me just get this evaluation tool pulled up. I've got all sorts of windows open right now. Okay, so if somebody else could also have Kevin's copy of the evaluation open?
Got it.
That would be, that would be helpful.
Moving forward, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we will go through this line by line and we will, we will give a rating to every, every line. The ratings on the evaluation tool are a one, two, or a three. You can give a point five, so you could give a 1.5 or a 2.5. It's not recommended to go any more granular than that. Before we get started, Mr. Aiken, I do need to ask you, since you have the, the ability, you have, you're the only one that has the ability, if you want to conduct your evaluation in closed session, you have to ask for that, so I'm going to give you the ability to do that.
No, we're doing it right here.
Okay. All right, so I didn't anticipate you wanting to go into closed session.
I know, you have to ask the question.
I've got to ask the question, absolutely. All right, so the first section is Governance and Board Relations, and I don't know why I have that pop up, jumping up. So A1, Policy Involvement. We have, Mr. Aiken has scored himself a three there, being is actively involved in the development, recommendation, and administration of district policies. I guess the way that I would, I would ask the Board is, does the Board, any individual member of the Board, do you have a different rating than what Mr. Aiken has for himself there? No?
No, no, sir.
I, I had a three there, Mr. Aiken has a three, everybody else is good with a three?
Yes.
Okay. Goal Development. Mr. Aiken has himself rated as a three, facilitates the development of short-term goals for the district and reports goals, progress to the Board, provides the necessary financial strategies to meet those goals, and budgets, budget practices help to ensure alignment of resources to goals. Again, Mr. Aiken has himself as a three, what does the Board have him as?
Three.
Everybody's good with a three there? Okay. A3, Information. Mr. Aiken has himself listed as a three, and for those that are, are hearing this, a one is need support, two is developing, and, and three is effective. A three is, as established, mutual agreed-upon protocols that consistently keep all board members informed with appropriate information as needed, so the Board may perform its responsibilities. Does the Board agree with a three or is there a different rating?
Three.
Three? Okay. Materials and Background. Mr. Aiken has himself rated as a three as well, which is, meeting, meeting materials are provided with adequate background and historical perspective included, recommendations are well thought out. What does the Board have as a...
Three.
Three.
Three? Okay, thank you. A5, Board Questions. Mr. Aiken has himself rated as a three, which is, Board Questions are addressed with follow-up to all board members. What does the Board have?
Three.
Everybody good with a three then? Okay, that's what I'm hearing. All right. A6, Board Development. Mr. Aiken has himself rated as a three, which is, actively encourages Board Development by providing Board Members with information regarding Board Development Opportunities when they arise and ensures funding is available and aligned to Board Development Plan. Mr. Aiken again has himself as a three, what does the Board have?
Three.
Okay, I actually have that as a, as a, I'm just saying, no, you don't have to, you're good. I have it rated as a 2.5, only because, you know, I'm not sure that it should fall on, on Mr. Aiken to have a form, formal Board Development Plan. I think that should be the Board's responsibility, but...
That's how I looked at it, I was like, what is he offering? He doesn't offer us, I mean, like today maybe, did you organize, Marshall?
Yeah, we thought, I mean, we... To me, that was just, you know what?
Well, I don't...
We're evaluating each other, we do it together. I mean, we do, that's not solely on me, it's not solely on him, we just try to, hey, this is something, you know, what I try to do for the educational piece, usually every Friday in our updates, I'm giving you guys some legislations coming out, it's things that help you understand, you know, what we're looking at in the finance end of this.
Yep.
If we even figure that out some days, but that, you know, huh, who knows, we're still December and we still don't know.
Exactly.
Yeah, I looked at it, I didn't know if you were supposed to offer us like times when we can go to a class and learn how to be a board.
Oh, that's on you guys.
Yeah, that's what I wondered why.
Yeah.
But you always keep us informed on it.
Well, yeah, I try to, I try to give you guys educational things. I'm sorry, you know, you guys, you guys have lives to live.
No, that's why I appreciate your emails.
Rich, the question was, Jason wasn't sure if, if Mr. Aiken needed to reach out to us and let us know about the classes that are available and that.
No, well, he could, he could if he gets it, but really, that, that's really, that's on, on each one of us.
You should be taking as soon as we come on the Board, personally.
So I'm hearing...
That's your, that falls first on you.
That's why I did it, why are you, I know you ain't looking at me.
No, not you.
I feel like you're pointing right at me.
I am.
All right, so I'm hearing from the Board a three there?
Yes.
Three?
Was it three? Everybody three?
Yes.
Okay, so will... Okay, so, we'll hit these, these, um, sections again, um, but this, so the section on governance and board relations, uh, the category rating is a three, and that is weighted 20%. There are, there is a spot for comments, uh, both from, uh, the superintendent and, uh, the board. So, um, I'm, I'm not worried about the comments tonight. So, I guess I will, I would ask the, the individual board members, if you have a specific comment about a section, please email it to me. I will consolidate those comments into, um, the final, um, evaluation, uh, of Mr. Aiken. And Mr. Aiken has the opportunity to put comments in as well. Okay? So, that takes us to, uh, section B, which is community relations. And, um, I, just so everybody knows, I did ask the, the building admins to give some feedback, right? And I asked him to, to give some feedback. Um, Jamie, feel free to give feedback as well. If you guys have specific feedback on any one of these sections, please don't hesitate to, to speak up and, and give that feedback, okay? All right, so, community relations, um, communication with community and parents is the first item. Mr. Aiken has himself rated as a three, which is actively seeks two-way communication with the community and parents as appropriate. What does the board have?
Three.
He wrote a two point five, okay? So, we've got, I'm hearing threes pretty much down the, down the row.
Yes, sir.
Is, is three a, a rating that the, uh, the board can agree on?
Yes.
I need to catch up my own here, so I know what I... All right, so we're gonna go through there. Uh, the next one, community and parent input. Mr. Aiken has himself listed as a three. Three being actively seeks community and parent input and engages the community and parents in goal-setting and decision-making. What does the, the board have?
Three.
Everybody's got threes there? Okay. Thank you. Uh, media relations. Mr. Aiken has himself listed as a two. A two being developing is, um, isn't proactive, but is, uh, cooperative with the media when contacted. What does the rest of the board have?
I agreed and stayed with two.
And I, I can't say whatever. I, I don't know what he does or doesn't do with the media, so, I can't say a zero. I just, I can't grade it all on that.
I kinda looked at it as the newsletter, you know, it's put down media, and I think he does a good job. And I, I viewed it just, I mean, don't feel bad. I, I viewed it like press, you know?
Yeah, that's how I viewed it.
And we've, we've had a very mixed, uh, relationship with the, with the local press, so. I'm good with a one-five. I mean, it, you know, it just depends on the day when they get me, or what questions they ask.
So, I'm, I'm hearing, I'm hearing...
You know, I was thinking newsletter, you know, he puts media out there. I didn't think of, I mean, hopefully, I mean...
So, how did you, how did you rank?
I put a three because I thought the newsletter was something that is, is media, we have, we have a better...
I was thinking... TV news and all that.
I, I think overall, I mean, it's those guys at the end of the table, the one next to me. I mean, these, these guys are doing a great job with it. We're communicating more with our parents. That so falls on you. I know, but, I mean, I, I'm the guy that talks to the paper, so that's what I looked at myself. I'll, I'll take the two on it.
I, I had a, I had a big old question mark on that one, 'cause it's like, I don't know how much you engage with the, with the media, but I was...
Well, every time I do, it kinda backfires, Ken.
Yeah, I was strictly thinking the media.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking, like, news media as well. So...
Hopefully, we don't have to worry about that.
So...
We don't too much, but...
Mr. Aiken has himself as a, as a, as a two. I'm hearing some two point fives. I'm hearing a three. I didn't rank it, to be honest.
I'll go with the two. I mean, I'll, I'll agree with him.
Thank you. So, I'm hearing, I'm hearing two point fives, and I'm hearing two.
Two point five.
Um, I, okay, I'm, I'm going to ask the admins. How would, how would you rank this?
I would think evidence that we recognize that it is clearly up to us to develop and to make it fairer.
Yep.
Very true.
Yes. Very fair.
All right, with the, is the board okay with a two point five?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You know, I, I think we have, have number paddles, like, on a diving team. You know, all we have to do is hold up our number.
All right.
I'll let you work on that.
Okay, next time.
That'll, that'll be an assignment for you in the new year. All right. District image is number four under community relations. Mr. Aiken has given himself a three. And, excuse me, a three is projects a positive image at all times and is a champion for the district. Uh, knowledgeable and speaks well for the district. What does everybody have?
If we could go higher than...
Three.
You have a three plus, okay?
Everywhere.
Is, is everybody in agreement with a three?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do a three there. And approachability, uh, Mr. Aiken has himself as a three, uh, which says, is consistently visible at a variety of events and is approachable, uh, by members of the community. Again, Mr. Aiken has himself as a three. What does the board have?
Three.
Three? Okay, I would agree with that. All right, so, for community relations, it has a 15% weight, and the category rating there is a two point nine. Okay. The next section is staff relations, so I'm definitely looking for input from, uh, the admins and those sitting up here at the table, for your feedback here. Staff input, uh, Mr. Aiken has himself listed as a three, which is actively seeks staff input and engages staff in goal-setting and decision-making. What does the board have?
Three.
I put two point five.
Threes and a two point five. Admins, what did you say? Three? Okay. Three down there, too?
I said I'm good with it.
Okay. I, I, I was pretty sure Jamie was just holding up two, two fingers there for a second.
Maybe she was holding up one.
I didn't say that.
Well, she numbered one.
Oh, no. Oh, she tells me that a lot.
All right. Staff communication. Mr. Aiken has himself listed as a three, and a three is consistently keeps staff informed of important matters. What does the board have?
Three.
Three? Admins? Three? It looks like three is a unanimous score there. Okay, good. Personnel matters, uh, Mr. Aiken has himself listed as a three, which is, uh, person, personnel matters are handled with consistently fairly, fairness, discretion, and, uh, impartiality. Personal procedures, uh, personnel procedures are regarded, are regularly reviewed and communicated to staff and updated as needed. Again, Mr. Aiken has himself as a three. What does the board have?
Three.
Two point five.
Two point five, okay. Admins? Three? Down at the far end, down here, you got threes down there, okay? Is the board good with a three rating? Okay. All right. Delegation of duties. Mr. Aiken has himself as a three there as well. Uh, delegates responsibility to staff that will foster professional growth, leadership, and decision-making skills. What does the board have?
Three.
Two point five.
Two point five?
Tough.
Okay? He, he is tough. He is tough. All right, admins? Threes? Three plus? We can't do a three plus.
Well, we're doing it anyway.
There's, there is an extra credit here, guys. All right, where are we at down here? Threes? Okay, is, the board is all good with three then?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Old boy, does he delegate.
Well, I, I, I will say, there have been multiple conversations that I have had with Mr. Aiken, and we have talked about putting people in the positions for them to make a decision, to allow them to, to, to grow, and that might mean that they failed, but... He does put them in that, that position. He just doesn't let them flounder there, so that is, that is good.
I, you know, really, for us board members, you know, when it comes to staff relations, we really don't know what goes on. However, I will say this. I can tell in the difference on how you perform in the board meetings. I can tell by your reports.
Yep.
I can tell by your faces, your voices. See, all of that comes into play. That's how we can evaluate, that's how I can evaluate of what's going on. In fact, I'm just gonna say to some of your, uh, your staff here, um, I've seen changes in you personally. Okay, I, I've, I've seen, uh, growth. I, I've seen how you, uh, have taken initiative and grabbed the bull by the horns in your performing, but, um, being positive, too.
And the unity.
And I, I, I just wanna compliment you on the positiveness. Because there, there was a lot to overcome.
It's pretty, it's pretty easy to be positive with what you have here.
And then, that's a reflection. It flows down from the top. Leadership always flows from, from the top. So, I just wanna compliment the staff that, that's what I see in this.
Thank you, Rich.
Yeah, and, and, um, you know, this, to me, this goes right back to the letter of agreement that we agreed to, uh, earlier tonight, too. You know, I mean, that just shows that those relationships are, are a lot stronger. And, you know, the, and that's, to me, that says a lot, especially with the amount of change that's happened in the district over the last year. There's been a ton of change that has happened, and there's a ton more coming, right? I mean, we just, we just approved to consolidate. There's a lot of change. And to have that level of, of, uh, collaboration happening is pretty cool. All right, um, recruitment is next. Uh, Mr. Aiken has himself listed as a three, which is a formal recruitment and hiring process is followed for each hiring opportunity. Actively recruits the best staff available and encourages their application to the district. What does the board have?
Three.
Everybody's got threes? Rick's got a three?
Oh, Rick has a three or gone.
Did he change it?
Hard to believe, isn't it?
And, and I switch with Rick. I actually have a two point five, because I, I focused in on the word formal. I'm, I'm just not necessarily 100% sure that there's a formal recruitment, uh, process, but I can be swayed.
We have one. We have one.
Well, that, that's...
Would you like to see that? I, I will send it to you.
Yeah, I do wanna, I wanna see it before I agree to anything other than a two point five.
It don't matter. You're outnumbered anyway.
I know. You guys are at three? What are we at down here?
Ladies?
Kim, Jamie?
Jamie.
Did Kim agree to a three? Okay, I am outnumbered. Okay. So, three is our score there? Uh, labor relations, uh, Mr. Aiken has himself listed as a three. Proactively works with union leadership to build relationship, uh, relationships with staff, uh, groups, and establishes trust and effective sharing of information in the bargaining process as appropriate. What does the board have?
Three.
Threes? Admins? What would you rate this one? Three? Kim and Jamie? Threes there, okay. Everybody good with a three?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Visibility in the district. Mr. Aiken has himself as a three. Consistently visi, visits buildings and classrooms and attends special activities.
I don't think the three is high enough, 'cause he's everywhere, all day long, walking between buildings, all day long.
Look at me, I gotta get my steps.
I think you do.
Yes, you do. Everybody good with a three there? Admins, is he in the buildings too much for you? Okay. Three down here as well? Okay. Board's good with a three there then?
Yes, sir.
All right, so that category rating is a three with a 15% weight. All right. Business, uh, and finance is our next section. I gotta put mine. All right, so the first one, uh, budget development and management. Mr. Aiken has himself as a three, which is, uh, budget actions are proactive and consider the most current information and data while also planning for long-range needs. A balance is sought to meet the needs of the students and remain fiscally responsible to the community. Again, Mr. Aiken has himself as a three. What does the board have?
Three.
Three? Kim? Three? Okay. Admins, would you agree with that? Okay? All right. Budget reports. Mr. Aiken has himself as a three. Thank you for this, helping keep me on track. Uh, budget reports. Mr. Aiken has himself as a three, which is, uh, reports to the board concerning the budget and financial status on a regular basis, monthly, quarterly, et cetera, as agreed upon by governance team. All right, what does the board have there?
Three.
Three? Kim, would you agree with a three?
That's how I count for some of them.
I know.
He makes sure you get it done.
Yeah, some coming up, I was like, mm.
The, the next one, too. I mean, let's be, let's be honest. I mean, I just evaluated these two on these two.
Why, why do you think I asked for your input on this as well? I know.
Yeah.
I know. Yes. Yes, I know you do. All right.
Overly.
Multiple times a day.
Oh, yeah.
So, that remains a three?
Yes, we're gonna stay with the three, right? Good? Nope, that's good. If, if you have anything to add, though, please, please be, uh, feel free to do so. All right, fiscal controls. Mr. Aiken has himself as a three. Promotes appropriate financial controls, including third-party audits and reconciliation of accounts. Is up to date on GAAP and state accounting procedures, maintains, uh, internal controls. Again, Mr. Aiken has himself as a three. What does the board have as a rating?
Three.
Three? Kim? Three?
I think we actually did an audit this summer.
And I know that you guys have, you guys have done a lot of work there. All right, uh, facility management. Mr. Aiken has himself as a two. A two is facilities, uh, needs are discussed internally, but a plan is not created. Issues are addressed on an as-needed basis. What does the board have?
Two point five.
Okay?
I had to agree, but when I read it to it, really, because we have a plan, we just don't have the money to do it. I mean, I'll honestly, that's all I mean. We do, we have a plan, but we can't, we can't implement it because we don't have the, the finances to do it, so.
Yeah, and, and, and I would say, now that I'm, I'm reading that again, it says, um, um, you know, with, with a projected plan to secure funding. Now, you know, we had a plan to secure funding, right? We had a, a sinking fund question that was out there, you know? I mean, the plan was there. That's why, that's why I personally rated it as a three.
That's why I did it, too.
Um, but...
Hey, the plan didn't go through, so.
The plan did not go through.
I think I'm a three.
That's why we came with plan B.
Yeah. It's kinda, it's in a fluid state. It really is.
All right. So, we've got some threes. We've got some two point fives. Uh, Mr. Aiken has himself as a two. Would the board wanna go a two point five, or go to a three?
Two point two five.
I, I agree with the net.
We're not doing quarter points.
I think you put the plan in action, and when it didn't work, we put another plan in action.
True.
Yeah, I was just more standing on the basis of our proposed consolidation.
Yep.
And we're in the middle of it, so I'm a little torn on that, because we're in the middle.
Okay, so...
But if I were to exclude that and go off past, I could agree to a three. But if I were to exclude that and go off past, I could agree to a three.
Okay, so...
Right now, I'm still...
Do we still have input?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
We've been talking about this since the board...
Yeah. Yeah.
He's known that we need to do something, so he's been trying to put us...
Right.
How come nobody thought of that before?
No, I can move to a three.
All right. So, is the board good with a three here, or do we want to stick to a 2.5?
Go with a three.
Go with a three.
Three?
Okay, three.
Three? Okay. We're gonna take that one to a three? All right. Resource allocation. Mr. Akin has himself as a two, and a two is resources are allocated to meet immediate needs. What does the board have?
2.5.
I have 2.5.
I have an A because I really don't know how that, the staff only needs to respond on that, if they have the resources to work with.
I kind of put three again because he went out on them, kind of put an MTS hiring, Jamie, the way he did. It's definitely...
Oh, that was easy. There wasn't a lot of risk.
Definitely a lot.
There's not a lot of risk sitting at this table.
But I'm saying, it's a long-term goal.
No, I know.
Because that is a total, and, you know, it was an investment for us, for the school. It's definitely...
Admin?
We've definitely seen it as it's costing us money, but we have to, I don't know.
I thought that I was... Like, you sort of just kind of called and said...
You were, but...
I know. You need an extra floor teacher. I was like, what? Because that is the only major reason why the district has to get that. Like, we haven't been talking about it in the first place. And he figured that out. He didn't even wait for us to ask for it again. He just called and said, we need that, make that work, and everything else. But I really just, I was like, whoa. So, it has been a game changer for us. Without that, we would not be where we are now. And so I think, like, that is something that district are not paying money to right now. But he wasn't paying money, or he was paying money in the same time.
Right.
Carol, do you think by him asking that part of that is him having an advantage? That he was already here for years? So when he stepped into the position, he had already seen a lot of the needs and everything? So that really was a major plus for this district to bring in someone from within.
No. And I may have thought you were raising it. So, I can tell you right now, like, I've...
It still might be.
One time I called Kevin and we were talking, and he hung up, and I said, and we were hanging up, and I'm like, love you, and I go, wait! I don't love you, I don't even like you! And he's like, I know what you mean. So we hang up, and I have said this to many people in my staff, like, out in the open. He is the favorite boss I've ever had.
Aww.
And I have a lot of bosses. And so I just sit down, see that coming a mile away.
And she loves him!
Thanks, Rick.
Aww, I love that.
In your own way.
Okay, I can move mine to a three.
Carol and Lynn are sitting next to each other right now, and I'm not even worried there's gonna be a fight breaking out, so we're good.
Yeah, I may have told Lynn that. Mr. D?
I just would ask Kevin, like, if he gives up a two, because he might always say yes when he thinks he knows he can have.
Right.
And he asks, and he's gotta say no.
No.
He would love to say yes, but Kim's gonna say no.
It's Kim's fault. No, I mean, my rationale behind that was, we are so hamstrung with facilities.
Yeah.
You know, we're, there's so, we're spending so much money on upkeep of this district that we can't really do the long-term planning and know that, hey, that half a million dollars or that $150,000, whatever the amount is, we just always have to keep something back from the kids and from the, you know, staff.
Yep.
In case we have, as Ken loved to say, the boiler going out.
Right.
You know? And it's kind of a oxymoron there, but...
I hate that excuse.
I know you do, and I do, too. I absolutely, you know, I hate it. But we, we have to be very conscientious that we have some money in reserve in case we run into a big-ticket item, which Dave, we just ran into a medium-ticket item at our elementary. So, you know, that's something we, we're at a disadvantage from other districts.
Yeah.
Because we have to do that. Where if I'm in Rockford or Kent City or somewhere else, I've got a fund right now that I can go into, and that takes care of my buildings.
Mm-hmm.
So that's why I gave myself a two on that.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So I'm hearing a three from the admins. Kim? Jamie?
So I want to say, there's been a couple positions that had to be realigned because of need, and that's our DL staff, because of the changing of laws. And so they've had to, we've had to reallocate some people there. Special ads, we have a specialized coach that has stepped up to the plate and coached some of our teachers that have needed it, so I would say a three.
Okay.
And I'd like to, I'd like to say, this goes back to why the first one I said a 2.5, because you do this stuff, but yet, in the long term, you know, our budget is important. So I, that's why I kind of thought that first one, maybe a little lower, but the last one, I feel agree.
Yeah, I, I looked at this one, and to me, the key is, and seeks to meet both the immediate and long-range objectives, right? And I know that, that you do that. So, that's, that's why I rated you a three here. But I'm, I'm looking for consensus amongst the board.
Three, sir, three.
Are we at three?
Yes.
Everybody's at a three?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So for business, finance, the category rating is three with a weight of 20%. Let's see here. The next one is instructional leadership.
Oh, you did?
No.
Those are, those are yours.
All right. Performance evaluation system. Mr. Akin has himself rated as a three, which is performance evaluation system has been established and is in compliance with state law, hopefully. Provides opportunities for growth to, growth to instrument, instructional, geez, instructional staff, and is applied consistently across the district with consistent results. Individual development plans are provided to staff related to less than, rated as less than effective. All right. So, again, Mr. Akin has himself rated as a three. What does the board have?
Three.
Three.
Admins, three? Kim, Jamie?
Three.
Okay. I actually, I, I had it listed as a 2.5 with a question mark, just because I wasn't sure about the individual development plan section of that. So, but I am, Jamie's kind of looking at me like, you ought to know better.
You ought to talk about it. Want to talk about it? Want to step outside?
Yeah, not right now. I'm scared of her. All right. So, board is good with a three there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Building-level leadership.
Down there.
Mr. Akin has himself listed as a three. Principles are provided, defined autonomy consistently with accountability. Goals for learning and instruction are prioritized. I guess I'm gonna ask the admins first. How would you rate that? Three? Okay. Board?
Three.
Three? Jamie? Kim?
Three.
Threes there? Everybody's good with a three, then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Staff development. Mr. Akin has himself listed as a three, and that is, staff development programs are offered based upon available opportunities that are targeted towards staff growth and increasing, increasing, bleh, increasing student achievement, if I can spit it out. All right. What does the board have there?
Three.
Three? Three down here from the admins?
Solid.
Solid three? Okay. Not hearing any disagreement there. School improvement. Mr. Akin has himself as a three. School improvement plans are in place at all buildings and align with the district-wide goals. Admins, I'm gonna ask you guys first. Three there? Okay. Board?
Three.
I left it blank.
You left it blank?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess maybe I had to stop. Come on in.
Okay. I'm good with a three.
You're good with a three? Jamie and Kim?
I'm gonna say 2.5 because my Kip is working on aligning to MTSS and our strategic plan, but we're not there yet.
Okay. She's gone.
Oh, that's her world. Honestly, this, I just handed it to her and said, you know, these are all you.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
We've worked harder than ever before, but we're not...
Honestly, if looking at it through that lens, we'll never be a three, and that's
good. That's a good thing, just continuous improvement. I didn't look at through that lens. I looked at, we've got my Kip, and it takes into account the strategic plan, but as far as the MTSS goes, we're not there. We're, we're getting there, but it's located not be a three in that one.
Okay. So are you, are you asking to change, are you asking to change your rating?
I'm good with a two.
Carol, that's something bad.
Oh, wait, wait. Carol?
What?
You're not gonna ask to step outside, are you?
I'm just gonna say, it's like on every one of our agendas. We talk about it every time together. We have more meetings about that than we do. Of course, I think, like, as far as systematic development, we are, Kevin is ranking three, and I'm not, I'm just saying that, like, I don't want you to leave thinking that that's the work that needs to be done isn't necessarily...
Right.
It's just longer.
Well, and, and to be fair, this doesn't talk about the outcomes. It talks about the planning, right? So, always planning to improve and always planning to be better, so...
Yeah, we're doing that. That's the lens I looked at, but...
Is he aligned?
She, her lens, her lens is the one that counts here.
Yeah, but we outnumber her.
No. No. This is her world, and this is where she lives, so I'm good with a 2.5 or a 2 on that.
We're out, we, we don't say three.
Okay, we're just gonna go with 2.5 then.
How about 2.99?
Okay, so...
It'll mess up.
Board?
I'm not a rural person.
Okay. Board, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna go down the line, just ask you to say either whatever, whatever rating you're at. So, Rick, let's start with you.
I'm gonna say three, even though I just put a question.
Okay?
Yeah, I think it's a three.
Three?
Three.
Three?
Three.
Three, because it says, plans are in place.
Okay.
I'm gonna be technical on that.
The rating is a three. All right. So, the next item, curriculum. Mr. Akin has himself as a three. Curriculum is in place, aligned across grade levels, and in compliance with state standards. What does the board have?
Three.
Three there?
Three for yourself.
Admins, three?
Curriculum, direct.
Jamie? Curriculum?
So the only critical thing I would say is that we are in a pilot 712 right now.
Yep.
So is, are we, is curriculum in place? With a pilot?
You're working on it.
I'm, I'm hearing from the board a three?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
2.5.
You were too late. Okay, you said it after it was underlined.
I would, I would agree, just because the highest... We are, we're still working on it. We've got some...
Well, that's your fault.
But it's... Wow! So the curriculum's not in place, you don't think, up there? Or the curriculum is?
No, there's, we have a lot of work to do with our curriculum. And I'm not just talking about buying a grant package and putting it in front of people.
And that comes from years in the past.
That takes time.
Well, and we also have to make sure that it's aligned with state standards. We also have to make sure it's aligned with what we as a community want.
Right.
Because just because something comes from the company doesn't mean that it fits with what we want to do down here.
That's right.
No, I agree, and that's where I struggle a lot. Because it's like, am I basing this off of how far we've come to where we started from? Or where we're going with it? Because I know we've got a lot more work to do because we've changed it in the most positive way. I'm gonna put that out there. In the most positive way, we gave ourselves way more work to do. But from where we started, is that a 2.5 or a 3?
I would agree with what you're saying. Like, we've come so far, but we've made more work for ourselves.
Yeah, we did. And I think that that's the next evaluation. So, from...
I think if you ask the staff, like, teachers, especially something...
Okay. I can respect that, that's where we're coming from.
Okay. So, on curriculum, where are we with the score? Board?
I'm gonna trust the staff and say 2.5.
Rachel, you're at a 2.5?
Yep.
2.5s or 3s?
I have a 3.
I'm going to trust the staff and say 2.5.
Rachel, you're on a 2.5?
Yep.
2.5s or threes?
I have a three.
I mean, if they're.
You got four buildings and there's only one.
We got seven to 12, you know, and it says aligned with all grades. So, you know, Josh is saying it's not all the way in. I mean, I, but it's definitely not a two because.
No.
Right.
No.
Teachers are making their own, so.
I'd like to go two and a half.
Can, can the board, uh, can the board get behind a 2.5 on curriculum?
Yes, sir.
See?
Sorry to interrupt.
Does it matter if they, if they agree it? I don't have to change.
But you're agreeing to the final score.
I, I will with the final score.
Okay. So I'm changing that one to a 2.5.
But that's not what I think.
Interesting. I don't want to step outside.
Yeah. Wait till you go to your crowd.
Right, right. Uh, student voice, Mr. Aiken has himself, uh, wait a minute, no, I jumped one, sorry.
We're on instruction.
Sorry. Instruction. I clicked in that box and then I read the line below, so thank you for correcting me. Instruction, uh, Mr. Aiken has himself as a three. Effort is made to accommodate diverse learning styles, needs and levels of readiness. Technology is used to enhance teaching and learning. What does the board have?
Three.
Three?
All the way, three.
We, we would just say it's a 2.5 because of the technology.
Okay.
It's not like you have one-on-one devices. We just zero it out this time. It's not something.
Respect to the.
It's not.
Right. Okay.
He should get his building.
Yeah.
We've had conversations, we're not there yet, with our higher-level learners. In the past, it's been brought to pretty much the middle, we've got to do a better job with our students. We've got the most, that's what we've discussed.
But that kind of goes back to, that goes back to finances.
It does.
To big-time finances.
Yeah, and if you focus on effort, it's based on structure. That's just an area that we, we haven't.
Right.
We spend a lot of time on engagement and could there be more of that? Maybe it's not even going to end up being one of our things, maybe we just.
Yeah. I'm all for the engagement, so.
Yep. Yeah, I just look at our, I think our goal is the proficiency levels for the math and the reading in that, and not if they know how to download, upload, or unload, or anything like that. Because, you know, if they're proficient, you know, if they can't read, they're not going to be able to comprehend what's coming up on that screen anyways. And, and I, I think if we, if you continue to focus on the proficiency level, they can handle the technology on that.
But you did get those smart screens, right?
What's that?
Yeah, we do.
So there's some tech.
But, but again, it's what are they being used for? And I speak to people who use technology. A lot of my classroom, when I walk in, it may be just up there for.
Take notes.
They basically just.
Sure. Yep, 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 yep.
No, I see what you're saying.
Okay. So board, where are we at with, uh, instruction?
I have a three.
Three?
Three.
Three.
Three? Okay. I'm hearing threes. All right. Student voice, Mr. Aiken has himself as a three. Seeks the student voice through engagement of student and goal development and/or decision-making.
All the way three.
Oh, my.
This does provide a three.
No, that's not true. We did 2.5 because we have a question right here.
Okay, what is it?
Oh, we just, I like, we don't know. I think that's why we put the question. We just don't see it.
That, that falls under.
That's a principle I saw all the time.
But district-wide, one of the goals was we needed kids on the MTSS committees. You need building improvement teams. That's, that's what that is.
Well, as a board member, I see all that you do with many of our students, also adding Evan, who, who now comes in and updates the board. So if we had it separated at levels, the board.
Well, I was over here at lunch today with the kids and I asked them, do you like what Mike's serving you guys today?
Uh-huh.
So, were, were you?
Oh, now the truth comes out.
We filled this out a couple days ago.
So Evan, I, I will ask you, what, what is your thought on, on Mr. Aiken and student voice? Does he seek students' input?
So 2.5 or a three, Evan?
I would give it a three. I would give it a three.
Evan says three.
Attaboy, Al.
All right. Is the board good with a three?
Yes, sir.
Evan, we can give you immunity if you really want to say what you really want to say.
All right. Uh, E8 is support for students. Mr. Aiken has himself listed as a three. Programs and activ, and activities are available for students, maintains a safe, caring and healthy learning environment.
Three.
I'm hearing threes from the board, three from the admin.
I think we're good.
Are we safe?
We're safe.
Evan, are you good with a three? You didn't know you were going to get pulled into this, did you?
No, I didn't.
Well, you better watch it or we may have to take you out back, too.
Now, now, now you know. Jamie, how would you? Three? Okay. I'm hearing threes. Okay. Professional knowledge, Kevin has himself rated as a three, um, which is demonstrates knowledge of current instructional programs and is able to discuss them. Participates actively in professional groups and organizations for the benefit of the district and personal professional growth. Holds and maintains appropriate superintendent certifications. What does the board have?
Three.
Three.
Mr. Aiken, are you certified?
Uh, for six more months.
Well, then you made it for this, you know.
I got to get some sketches, maybe.
Admins, three?
I'm certified.
All right.
Yeah, I need some sketches.
Evan, would you give him a three? Okay. All right. We are going to give that a three then. All right. So that category, the, the rating is 2.94 with a weight of 30%. All right. So that takes us into student growth and assessment data, or student learning objectives metrics. Uh, Mr. Aiken has him listed as a three with the attached growth measurement maps tracker. So everybody's, uh, got this with their pocket. We've seen this in the past.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, I know. This is kind of, it gets kind of complex. So, yeah, so the thing that, that I, you know, that Kevin's highlighting on here, which is, this is, this has changed quite a bit over the last couple of years. Um, the amount of growth, um, you know, we're seeing about 11, 10 and a half to 11% growth across the grade levels in our, um, in our district. And, um, the, the one thing that really stands out to me is the lack of sliding backwards over the summer that, that we're seeing in this data.
We're getting better at that.
Yeah, I mean, we still have some.
The gap is closing.
Yep.
It's still a little. And actually, this year, we actually had some grow over the summer.
Yeah.
Which is very, very rare. But what you want to look at is like in the reading sheet, 24, 25, our ELPC grew 9.8% across the board. Middle school grew 11.7, and the high school grew 11.7 pers, or 11.5. That was for your reading maps.
Yep.
Then you look at the math, and I mean, this doesn't make your heart warm. The ELPC grew 24.6% last year. Middle school, 15.75, and the high school came in at 5% growth. So that's, those are some solid scores over the course of the year. Um, we changed up our student growth metric this year. It's, uh, it's going to be a, quite a bit more rigorous, but we're not going to have the results in until the spring because we're going spring to spring now.
Right.
And we're incorporating SAT scores, M-step scores, along with the maps. So it's, it's going to be pretty rigorous for our teachers and for our administrators. So I'm, I'm kind of really excited to see how that goes. But from purely a maps growth standpoint, I, I couldn't be happier where we're at right now with that. And I think one key thing we need to really look at is at the high school this year, when they took the fall maps and reading, you know, they, they, they just didn't do the assessments up there. We didn't progress monitor. We didn't know really what they knew. They took a test once a year and the results weren't good. Imagine that.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I look at our kids last year in, in ninth and 10th grade, they left off 68%, 57%, you know, 68 and 52% coming in this year, starting in the fall, you're looking at 72% for our ninth, 10th graders, 69% and 68%. That's, those are some really solid scores. And I mean, I think the biggest thing we did up there, Josh did, and the staff did, is, you know, it's a real simple thing. You have to show kids you care. Kids are not going to care about their academics unless the adults in the situation actually show them, hey, we want you to do well and we care about you.
Right.
And I think those scores are really indicative of kind of a cultural shift that we're seeing over there.
And I think you're right.
Absolutely. Okay. So Kevin has himself rated as a three. What does the board say?
Three.
Okay. Admins? Three? Kim, Jamie?
Three.
Three? Okay. Five.
Aw.
You can't add them together.
All right. So progress, progress towards district-wide goals. Uh, Mr. Aiken has himself as a three, meaning progress was made on 85 to 100% of the goals. Mr. Aiken, do you
want to just touch on that?
Well, I would say between all the cleanup on aisle three.
We've had a little bit of cleanup.
Yeah, we've, and I, and I don't evaluate myself on this. This is us as a team. We've, we've gone further and done more in the last year, you know, I would say a year and a half. Because I really can't count the first half here. But in the last year, I think this team, sitting at the table up here, we've moved the, moved the ball more than any time in the 15 years I've been here.
Sure did.
And, uh, we've got, the systems are being built and implemented. And I think, you know, my, my goal is when I leave this place, or when Carol leaves, or Jamie, the processes are here. You know, and that's, that's for you guys to make sure that stays the course because we've got good things going on here for our kids. And I think that's the biggest thing we have to focus on is the process of educating kids.
Yep.
We've never had those discussions here. We're having those now.
Right.
How to do it, what it takes, and, uh, you know, we don't talk about the finish on our basketball court anymore. So.
No, I love it. I love it.
All right. You don't get to derail us on this yet. All right. Um, board, uh, again, Mr. Aiken has himself listed as a three. What do you have?
Three.
Three? Admin?
Yes, sir.
You would say three? Jamie and Kim, you would agree with a three? Okay. So with that, uh, the determining rating, uh, ends up at a 2.968, which is 99%. And when we take the, the overall, um, evaluation score, that, um, that does break down to a, a 99% total. And the effective rating is from 85 to 100%. So he doesn't, he doesn't get any extra credit. Um, so with that, um, uh, the, the board is giving Mr. Aiken a rating of effective, which is the highest rating that he can be given. Uh, so I guess, um, Sabrina, I will need you to call for a vote to approve the rating of effective for Mr. Aiken.
That then brings us to agenda number eight. May I get a motion and support to approve?
No move.
Support.
So I have a motion by Richard and support by Rachel. And now I will take a roll call vote on that.
Just real quick in, in discussion, I just want to make sure that, that everybody understands we are approving an effective rating of 99% for Mr. Aiken.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Do we have any further discussion on it?
Kevin, the only thing that I would, I would say is, yeah, I know, um, thank, thank you for, for all the work that you've done because I know that, um, there has been a, a ton, uh, that you have had to clean up and, 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 you know, just think about how do we get out of some of the situations that the district was in. So your, uh, your approach to this and, and dedication to the students, I greatly appreciate.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Kevin.
Yeah, I just want to say to the administration and to staff, stay the course, status quo. You know, just, you know, you're going in the right direction, keep going there.
Yes, we are.
Yep.
Go for the gold.
It can only be done as a team, that's for sure.
It finally feels right.
That's it.
And, and if the, if board members, if you have specific comments on any section of the, of the evaluation, admins as well, if you have any specific comments that you would put in the evaluation tool, um, please send them to me. I will put those in the final, uh, version of this and I will get this sent to Veronica, uh, as soon as possible. So I want to get this sent out within the next day or so. So if you would do that.
Okay. Now I will take a roll call vote for an effective superintendent rating. Rick?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Rich?
Yay.
Jason?
Yay.
Donat?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
And I am an I. That brings us to agenda item nine, discussion items. Do we have any discussion items?
I would just like to publicly acknowledge that this district and community has lost somebody who poured their life into everything here. Um, Mike Osteen passed away recently. Um, he was a former vice principal, principal, curriculum director, assistant superintendent for the district. Um, uh, there will be services coming up this week, Wednesday and Thursday. Um, they will also be holding an informal celebration of life at the VFW as well. Um, so you guys are all invited to attend. Um, I remember him, when I was in the middle school, and he was just like this giant teddy bear. Always happy and just, it was very, for me, as a student, very rare to see him having a bad day. If he did, he hit it very well. But he, his whole family has poured a lot into this community.
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge him and his family will be in our prayers.
I believe the district is sending some flowers.
Yeah, we already have.
It was a very sudden passing with grandchildren present, so it was very.
Any further discussion items? No? Okay. That takes us to agenda item 10, adjournments. May I get a motion and support?
I make a motion.
I have a motion by Richard.
Support.
And support by Rachel. Everybody in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.
At 8:23.
8:23. Thank you, Rachel.
You can go home and finish dinner.
Thank you. I do want to catch you and chat.
Good job.
Thank you. I was.
You were.
A rusher.